All set.
Right. Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, there were changes that were issued by Governor Baker modifying open meeting law requirements due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And certain measures that were adopted during the state of emergency have been extended, including those allowing public bodies to conduct meetings in a virtual forum as long as the public has access to the meeting. This meeting's been posted on the district website with a Zoom link, allowing the public to join. And just another reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both audio and video, and will be posted on the district website. Before we get into things, just a quick note about the format of tonight's meeting. It was our intent to go back to in-person meetings, which we did once, and we learned after the fact that our audio equipment was not recording the meeting. So since then, we've been in the process of trying to get that repaired, and it sounds like we are halfway there. And the recording will happen, but we would not be able to broadcast our meeting live. So for that reason, we've decided to remain remote to enable maximum participation from the public. And when we're able to be in person again, we will do that. And one other scheduling note before we get underway. We are scheduled for a school committee meeting during February vacation. I believe the date is February 22nd. So we're going to actually cancel that meeting. We're going to have one meeting in February, on the second Tuesday of the month, and then we'll resume our normal schedule in March, so that everybody can enjoy a much deserved rest during the vacation. So with all of that being said, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 9th, 2021 meeting.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis? I can see he's joined us, but his mic is still on mute. Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan. You are muted, Dr. Gogan. Oh, there you are.
Thank you. I'm doing two formats tonight because my internet is not stable. So my apologies ahead of time. Can you hear me? Okay. I'll start with my personnel update. The new hires we've had are a long-term sub for ELA at Webster Middle School. That's Jared Lewis. We've also hired a per diem nurse to help our wonderful nurses out. We are hiring Monica Gothier two days a week, and she's helping out as we look for our second COVID nurse. I'm pleased to report that our nurses' offices have been very busy. And and we are grateful for the additional nursing staffing help. I would like to let you know that we have received some resignations from Ashley Carl, a para at Webster Middle School, and Lauren Maher, an ABA over at Webster Middle School. Our open positions are listed in your school committee packet. We are diligently trying to fill those positions. Like many districts, we're finding it very difficult this time of the year to fill positions. But nevertheless, we are still interviewing. I would like to also let you know that we have received the retirement of Gina O'Halloran.
Dr. Gogan, you hit remote.
You're muted, Dr. Gogan.
That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I hit remote. Sorry. We have received the retirement notifications from Gina O'Halloran. She's an ABA para over at Park Avenue, and Linda Boyso, a paraprofessional over at Webster Middle School. Both of those retirements will be at the year end, and we're grateful for them, for their hard work and dedication to our district. As I move on from personnel, I'd like to let you know that we've been extremely busy with the MSBA story of a building preparation. We will be live on video on December 8th at 10:00 AM to noon. Bartlett High School and our project has been tapped by MSBA specifically because we are doing a renovation and showing that we are really looking at reducing costs and reusing and recycling the wonderful building that we have while meeting our educational needs. In your school committee packet, the link to sign up if you care to join, that wonderful presentation is right there. There are no costs.
Dr. Gogan, we can't hear you.
Can you now hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not sure where I cut off, but the MSBA story of a building is going to be a wonderful event, and so we hope that many of you can attend. The invitation has also been sent out to our selectmen and finance committee and members of our community, and we'll send it out for our parents. We've been very busy with not only preparing for the story of a building, and I'm sure Mrs. Perangeli is going to detail some more of this, but we've had many, many meetings with our designer regarding our HVAC systems and our landscaping and our special education location of our special ed classrooms. That was, is particularly important because when we submit in December, where the special education classrooms are cannot move. Once DESI approves them, they are set in stone. So we had some meetings yesterday, some more meetings to take a look at the placement of our special education classrooms. So I'm going to stay on my phone. Other updates, we have, with the literacy reset, we have, I'm sorry. We have new coaching changes. We have two new coaches. One, her name is Emily Russen. She has not started yet. She'll be over at Webster Middle School. And Alex Stout will be specifically for Park Avenue School. Our Glean monthly district leadership meeting occurred in November, November 17th, and our next one is December 8th. This team of teachers and administrators are really learning more about the whole purpose of the literacy reset and why we're doing it. And what we're hoping to accomplish is a comprehensive district literacy plan at the end of this. Our Hill consultants had targeted presenting the results of the needs assessment mid-December. We recently received information that they need to push that back a bit. Our teachers have filled out surveys and participated in focus groups with the Hill consultants. We are, we continue to work with our DESI Sauce team and our early literacy consultant, Jean Wolfe, is new to us. And so one of the challenges with the literacy reset is maintaining a fluid conversation and communication. So there are a lot of cooks in the kitchen right now with that, and we want to make sure that the communication stays fluid. So we're working hard to keep that line of communication clean. So I know Director of Curriculum, Jill Chapdeline, and Director of Title I, Dr. Mackay, have been working diligently with Hill and myself and the principals to keep that communication line flowing, so there's no mixed messages to teachers. The ultimate goal of this literacy reset is to really support our teachers and really help them with using the research-based materials and being, still being creative with their lesson plannings. So we're hoping that our teachers form positive relationships with the Hill consultants that we have. Any questions on that before I move on? Okay. We have also been dealing with life in general over at the Webster Public School District, and we spoke a little bit about this at the last school committee meeting. We have seen an increase in student discipline issues and, and issues with safety. We have a monthly collaborative meeting with our WEA union leadership, and we spoke at length and in detail about some of the concerns that teachers were bringing forward. And I asked the principals to come to this meeting. So we are teaming to address the issues of code of conduct and safety in all of our schools. One of the things that has resulted from that meeting were student assemblies over at Bartlett High School, and I know that there were some student assemblies over at the Webster Middle School. For parents that are listening, we really need to keep the communication lines open with families and look at discipline as a teachable moment for students. And we need families with us as we help our students realize that misbehaving, there are other ways to conduct themselves. So we take safety very seriously, and I just wanted to fill you in on that. Any questions on that before I move on? I do want to let you know that Dr. Mackay and I will be attending the case conference, case leadership, leadership conference next week. This conference, again, supports the literacy work that we're doing and focuses on Title I programming. So we will be, we will be bringing back some information to our schools. I was pleased to see many of our school committee members at the Webster Middle School National Junior Honor Society induction on November 10th, and very pleased to see all the students who have earned that high honor through their hard work, wonderful citizenship, and dedication to to others. So that was a wonderful night, and I want to thank everyone for attending and congratulate our students for that. Mr. Peranto and I have been working diligently with our contact in Spain on the Real Madrid grant that we received. This year, we have been awarded 21,375 euros. We're not quite sure what that dollar amount will come in on. It is all contingent upon the exchange rate when we receive it. We expect to receive that sometime in December. Today, Mr. Peranto and I completed the very comprehensive budget form that they need over in Spain for Foundation Mahfey for this grant. And this year, we're looking at kind of building off of our program a little differently. We're looking at taking our L students once again and having them stay after school for extra support, help, and then go to the Real Madrid either basketball or soccer program. We're looking at folding in some snack and possibly dinner, and then transporting them home. We're also looking at adding some wonderful trips into this program, like taking the students to the Basketball Hall of Fame. So the goal of this program is really self-esteem development and team building. So we're happy to be providing this again, and we want to thank Mahfey and Foundation Mahfey for their wonderful grant that they have bestowed upon us. It is the season of holiday giving, and the It Starts at Home organization has provided, and will be providing, 50 students under the age of 14 holiday gifts. Our counselors have been hard at work figuring out who the students' need are, and we have shared that. So families will be contacted, and they will be picking up gifts for their students prior to the holiday season. The competency determination for the class of 20 to 22 and students with IEPs has been complete. The competency determination is for students who were unable to take the MCAS assessments because they were canceled, and the DESI Board of Education has approved a method of verifying the course level competencies. So Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Barris have been involved in verifying course completion for students who have earned their competency determinations. As your representative, I continue to attend both the CMC and the SWECC board meetings, which we had them both this week. And in your packet, I would like to share with you the CMC 2021 annual report, and also the SWECC 2021 annual report, along with the SWECC first quarter report that is in your packet. We are always trying to look at bringing funds into our district. And back in the end of October, we applied for the Mass Grad Grant, and Webster was recently awarded $20,000, and those funds will go directly towards the re-engagement specialist salary. So we're pleased to receive those additional funds into our district. And other good news, the Mass Step newsletter, which is a brand-new newsletter coming out from DESI, which references the Advanced Manufacturing Program that the Adult Education Program does over at Bay Path, that we were highlighted in this first edition, and that is also in your school committee packet. I want to give a shout out to the new director, Jenna Guin, and thank Bay Path again for letting us use their wonderful Advanced Manufacturing Lab, and that program has been in its fifth year and doing very well. And then finally, I just want to remind everyone that it's Thanksgiving, and we have the 101st Thanksgiving Day Parade, not parade, football games, where Bartlett Indians will play Southbridge Pioneers at 10:15 at the Ray Street Memorial Athletic Field. This is a wonderful way to come out and show your Bartlett and Webster pride. Tickets can be pre-purchased by, through the athletic director tomorrow before the game. $5 for students and $7 for adults. The day of the game, they will be $10. We want to wish our Bartlett Indians the best, and we hope to see many of you there cheering them on. And finally, I just want to say, it's been a very long year, and I want to thank our teachers and our staff for all their hard work and our students. You know, we are back in action and trying to aim for normal, and everyone is giving 150%. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone in our district for what they're putting forward every single day, students included. It is, everyone's tired, and everyone has to dig a little deeper to stay calm. So we're looking forward to tomorrow's pep rally, and we are opening that up to outside visitors. But due to the increase in COVID, we're asking that the outside visitors continue to wear their masks and sign in for contact tracing. And that concludes my report with a happy Thanksgiving wish to everyone. And I apologize for my internet.
That's okay. Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay. Well, thank you for that report. The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Evening. Thank you. Hi, everyone. We'll jump right in with the school building committee update. I apologize for any duplication of reporting here. As Dr. Gogan said, we met on November 17th. It was a Wednesday this month that we went. Typically, we meet on Thursdays, but we made some adjustments because of parent conference and conflicts. During that meeting, we spoke about the project being submitted. It is due to the MSBA on December 28th. So we have one last building committee before that submittal, which is on December 16th. There was an expectation that the board, the MSBA board, would be voting on the plan in our February meeting that they had, but we found out that it's been pushed off until March. So now we're not going to know the status from the MSBA until March. So that pushes things a little bit later, but we still have until June 30th to get the information, to go to town for support, and have some community forums and outreach about the project and what's that going to look like with some finer details for the community. So we're looking forward to that. As Dr. Gogan stated, that we've been really focusing on since our last meeting on special education. When we submit our plan to the MSBA, a big part of that plan is the special education programming, and that needs to be approved by the Department of Education, not the MSBA. So typically, that information will go over. They'll evaluate all the special education rooms and make sure that they're spread out throughout the building. And once that's approved, it cannot be changed. So it's important to make sure that we're comfortable with the layout, we're comfortable with all the classrooms. We've been getting feedback from the teachers coming in to take a look at it. Again, we've made some adjustments. The architect has gone back and done some more work, and he will be bringing another draft to the building committee at our next scheduled meeting on December 16th. So it is definitely moving along. We are fine-tuning things. We took a proactive approach. We had somebody from Conservation come and walk the grounds with us last week, just to, was that this week already? I'm losing my days. I think it was yesterday. It seems like a long wait already.
It was yesterday.
It feels like a long time ago. But it was yesterday. We walked the grounds and took a look at the areas that are going to be touched, and if we're going to need to move any wetland areas or relocate anything, just to make sure that they didn't see any heavy concerns as we start planning. So it was a good meeting, and we felt good when we were done. It didn't seem like there was going to be too much of a heavy lift for us. There's only one area that we're going to be looking into a little further. But I think we are definitely moving in the right direction, and it's really exciting. And I look forward to really narrowing, narrowing it down and having some good solid information that we can really start speaking to the public more and giving them more detailed information about the project. Is there any questions about the school building? No? Great. Next item is the Webster Middle School lighting. As you know, we had a grant for some lighting upgrades. They came in and they did, they were, I think they were working, actually, last meeting that we had, they were over at the school working. They did what they could. Like everything else, they don't have all the equipment in, so they completed what they could complete, and they tried to start with the heavy-hit areas first until they ran out of products. So now we're just waiting, products backordered, and we're waiting for that to come in. And as soon as it comes in, they will come back and finish the project. But we're kind of in a hold and padding right now. We do have until the end of December, so hopefully supplies will not be delayed too much. They were hopeful they'd be getting them in before the end of the year, but, you know, everybody in the world is waiting for some kind of piece of equipment or something out there right now, as the delays and supplies are impacting a lot of areas, and this is one of them. So we're just waiting, and as soon as they can, they'll come back and finish that project. Next item is the FY22 quarterly report. In your packet, you should have a budget. I'm not going to go through the budget page by page. I think you would really enjoy it, but, you know, for, for time and keeping the meeting moving, you know, I will keep that excitement from you. Everything looks good for now. We are on track with everything. The area that I would point you to, which is a high area that we watch every year, is special education tuition. And it appears that we are in good shape. I mean, right now at the budget, if you look like, look at it, it looks like there is a deficit, but we're really not in a deficit. Part of that tuition is offset by circuit breaker, but we are required to take everything out of our budget and then do a journal at the end of the year. So that typically should run in a deficit, deficit, and it should equal the amount that we planned on spending for our circuit breaker. So I believe we budgeted around $600,000 for that, $650,000, maybe, thousand. And we are lower than that in deficit, which means that our tuitions are in good shape for this year. I mean, as we know, that can change on a dime, and I know that Ms. Barris does have some things in the queue, but right now, I am not overly concerned about that unless we have some, you know, other real issues that come up. We always keep a close eye on that. So it's something that we're looking at. And does anybody have any questions on the FY22 budget? No? Great. And then the next item is the FY23 budget. We are working through our budget process. I've been meeting with building principals and instructional leadership teams, just talking about the budget process. We have our scheduled meeting with our, with our buildings to go over each departmental budget, and we will be compiling that budget for you for your first meeting in January. So we are moving through the process. Days are flying by, and I know we're going to be sitting there reviewing a budget with you in no time, but we are working on it. And then I don't have anything in other updates, just that we're plugging through. Things are, you know, running pretty smoothly in the business office on transportation, so I'm happy about that. And I just wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody has a nice, long weekend.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Right. Thanks. Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the Principal's Report. Good evening, Mrs. Parmley.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. So I wanted to start tonight by just letting you know, as I know, Dr. Gogan's already shared a little bit about it, that the Hill for Literacy, as you know, has been partnering with Webster with our implementation of our Tier One instruction. And at the other two schools, that includes the Glean grant. And, you know, we are very excited that we have a literacy consultant along with the other two schools who's been assigned to Park Avenue to coach, model, review data, and to assist with that implementation to support our teachers. And our coach will be providing support and feedback to our teachers, either one-on-one or through their office hours and through our CPTs. And we just concluded our needs assessment with all of our Park Avenue staff around our reading instruction. So we know that's going to give us some good data and good information as we move forward. And at Park Avenue, we're also in our second year of the Early Grades Literacy Grant. Last year, we focused on our foundational skills, as we talked about the, the science of reading. And this year, we're concentrating on building capacity for our teacher leadership, and we will continue to work collaborative, collaboratively with both consultants as we look to improve instruction for all of our students. We just, as you know, just concluded trimester one, or will be concluding it tomorrow, and we had our parent-teacher conferences. They were very successful. We had approximately between 625 to 650 folks who participated in our conferences via phone, Zoom, or in person. So that was very successful. We did get some great feedback from our families. So we were very encouraged by that. Our teachers did a terrific job going over important information about children's progress. And then we are bringing back an initiative we had before COVID, our compass, which is our safe and supportive measure that we have here at Park Avenue. And it's an opportunity for students to be able to take a break from the room for five to six minutes and reset. Sometimes students struggle with the demands of the academic day, and it gives them an opportunity to come in and choose either an active break or a quiet break. We have all different things that they can choose from, like puzzles or a mini-tramp. And we have a facilitator who's there, and her main job is to build trusting relationships, to talk about what it means to be a kid of character if they're struggling, to process out with them. She also will be checking in with students in the classroom, giving them key breaks throughout the day. Teachers are choosing the students at this point that they feel like could use those breaks, but compass is available for any student if they could use that. They just call up to the facilitator, and we provide that for them. We're taking data so that we know what students are getting and how it's, how successful it's being as far as trends and patterns of when these breaks are needed and whether they need an active or quiet break. So the goal of this is, you know, when, when children struggle and they begin to really need a break or a quiet spot, you know, sometimes children are overstimulated. Sometimes they just need to have a time to reset. We want to be able to provide that for them. The teachers have within their classroom kind of what we call a chill zone with just like a soft space with maybe some books. So if they need to do that right in the classroom, they can take that little break. And in our hallway, Gina Wojo has And in our hallway, um Gina Wojo has done a beautiful job creating a sensory path. And also creating areas where students can go out and take a little break right there with it with an adult. And it has been really nice to see our kindergartners getting the breaks that they need. And so what it does is it helps reset them so that they're able to come back to class, ready to learn and to get back engaged in the business of learning. So we're, you know, really looking forward to being able to get that back in motion. And our character trait for this month is gratitude. Living with a grateful heart in what we say and what we do. And um I gotta tell you that the students have been trying to really display that character trait. As they've moved throughout the building, at recess and how they're treating each other and um really proud of them. So happy Thanksgiving to any to everybody and I didn't know if you had any questions for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Parmley. Are there any questions from the committee? No? Well, thank you very much for your update and for, you know, the very timely to have gratitude as our character trait for this month. So um thank you for all the work that you all and your team are are doing. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next, the next item on the agenda is the student representative update. Um good evening, Colin.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um I I'm just gonna keep it short. So my first item is the football has their last game coming up on Thanksgiving against Southbridge at ten AM. At Memorial Field in Webster. That should be exciting, hundred and first uh anniversary of this rivalry. Each grade had assemblies about behavior in the school like Dr. Gogan talked about. Um I thought they went very well. Principal Thomas and. Uh Ms. Navies uh answered a lot of questions that the students had and they got a lot of answers back, which I also thought was very well. There was a film crew in Bartlett on Thursday working on producing a movie that shows the plan of the renovations for Bartlett. Real it's uh they took a lot of video on how the students use the school and how the new uh improvements of the school are gonna be used as well. I thought that was very cool. Parent-teacher conferences were last week, uh Wednesday and Thursday. I thought those also went very smoothly. A lot of parents showed out. And um the Drama Club had auditions for their murder on the menu on Thursday after school. And I hear they went very well and they're starting uh rehearsing for the play, which should be good. Also, the freshman class had their movie night last night. They um I I heard it went very well. A lot of people went and supported the freshman class, which is always amazing, supporting um each other's classes. And tomorrow, we have our pep rally for Thanksgiving to uh finish off Spirit Week and support the football team. Put on by the cheerleaders. Hopefully, uh everyone participates in Color Day tomorrow. It's always a fun event. I look forward to it every year. Uh and that is all I have. Any questions?
Thanks, Colin. Any questions for Colin?
I have one.
To the chair. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know, do you know when the murder mystery is going to be? Do you know anything more about it? Because it's gonna be a dinner like it was a few years ago.
I believe it's going to be a dinner like it used to be. I do not know when it is, though. I can find that out from a couple people I know that are in it and in the Drama Club, though, for you, Mrs. Boyd.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Colin, who is the Teacher Turkey Award going to?
Oh, I there was announcement at the end of the day, but I did not hear it because it's very loud. But I believe it is Mr. Carney. I believe he did end up winning it.
I can't wait to see.
That should be very funny.
Sounds like a lot of fun stuff going on over at Bartlett. Well, Colin, thanks. Sorry, go ahead.
It's a great way to end off the week, going in brief.
That's good. Glad to hear it. Well, wishing Bartlett the best of luck on Thursday. And wishing you and your family a very happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for your update.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda under old business is the COVID protocols update. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. Um I do wanna let you know that we held a meeting with um the new Board of Health Director in person. With our head nurse Cathy Pepin and Ms. Perangeli and myself. And she is a wonderful lady and working closely with us as our, we see not only our cases increase, but our close contacts increase. Our COVID numbers for last week were thirteen students and three staff. But over the past week, um there were a hundred and thirty-seven students sent home. As identified close contacts through school um settings. Most of those students were at the elementary and the middle school. So um we're pleased that we have put together the free mobile vaccination clinic coming into Webster. We're waiting for the link to send out to parents so they can pre-register. That would be on uh November of thirtieth and again, December, the second shot on December twenty-first. Not only are the cases increasing in our schools, they are also increasing in the town of Webster. The town of Webster just posted their weekly cases. There are sixty-one new cases, eighty active cases in town. Fifteen breakthrough cases and they have fifteen children under the age of nineteen with COVID. So I'm not reporting this to alarm anyone. We are um proceeding with, you know, all of our protocols. I just want um the committee to be informed. That there, that's a large number of students that have to be home and um we're hoping that we don't see. Uh an increase of cases over the holiday season. So hopefully, this little break here will help us all.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Navarada.
Dr. Gogan, is anyone, is is everyone sent home who's identified as a close contact? Regardless of vaccination status or symptoms?
No, if you're vaccinated, you're not sent home. So this, the people who are sent home as close contacts are non-vaccinated. If you are a close contact and you're vaccinated, you may be sent home if you have symptoms.
Thank you.
So that's why we're anxiously awaiting for this free mobile crisis um vaccination clinic for students five through twelve. I think that will help.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Navarada. Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you for the update, Dr. Gogan. And for all the all the work that goes into not only the contact tracing, but trying to keep kids apart and uh. You know, keep keeping their masks where they need to be. And and I'm sure those those calls to families are are probably the least favorite thing on a long list of things to do. On the part of the nurses and and other folks that need to do that. So certainly can empathize with that. The next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of a BCBA job description. That's a board-certified behavior analyst. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. This is a new job description, even though we've had this position. Uh it was shared with our union as well. There is a memo in your packet from Director of Student Services. With regards to the need for additional BCBA staff, which is the next thing on the agenda. But we'd first like you to approve this BCBA um job description.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this job description? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Lori, could you pull the committee, please?
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. The motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of a BCBA position at Park Avenue Elementary School.
As I stated, there is a memo from um Ms. Barris. And Ms. Barris, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything to that memo, but we do have a need for um. An additional um position and the funding for this position will come directly from uh grants.
That's correct. Good evening, everyone. Um you know, I think in keeping with um the uh theme of safety. And you know, some of the challenges that our students are facing, you know, in this kind of post-pandemic. And and current environment. You know, we have seen an uptick in um. In challenges for students from a social-emotional perspective. And I think that's a big focus of um not only what we wanna do as a district, but you can see that. You know, it carrying out through um, you know, the theme for funding, you know, as as we're seeing now. But um we have seen a a significant increase, not only in our student population. For students on the autism spectrum, but also um for students with social-emotional disabilities. And with that, um you know, when students do have behavioral concerns. Our ability to evaluate, um to follow those students, to um make sure that we're maintaining. Behavior protocols and trying to reduce our incidence of incidents and also of physical restraints. You know, we really feel at this point in time, it's very timely that we ask for this position in order to support. The level of need that the district has. So um if anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the committee about what a BCBA is or or how they would contribute to? The behaviors in the milieu over at Park Avenue? No? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the uh BCBA position at Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in two enthusiastic seconds. Um is there any further discussion? Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And uh the next item on the agenda is the approval of an interim dean of students' position at Webster Middle School. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. As you know, we are searching for an interim assistant principal. Given the increased needs of our students, we are requesting hiring an interim dean. Given the number of students over at Webster Middle School. This will be covered with the FY twenty-three budget. And we're seeking your approval. And as we are planning, I'm sorry, as we're planning the FY twenty-three budget, we will be putting that in. And this will be covered with the FY twenty-two budget.
Are there any questions or comments about this position for Dr. Gogan? Okay, well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the interim dean of students' position at Webster Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a school committee member to contract negotiations for the instructional assistance. I'll entertain a nomination, please.
I make a motion to nominate Sheila Blythe.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. Thank you, Member Blythe. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a school committee member to contract negotiations with the Webster Educators Association. I'll entertain a nomination.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Nick Adamopolis, please.
Second.
There is a nomination and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Radomopolis. Uh the next item on the agenda is the review, transfer, signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. Ms. Perangeli, you'd like us to come in and sign, I presume?
Yes, please, Ms. Millet. If you could come in and sign the warrant, I would appreciate it.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lori, could you pull the committee, please?
Member Navarada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Sadiq.
Yes. Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Bye.
Bye-bye.